Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting up here to keep our council to order. We'll begin with a moment of silence. Thank you. Please rise for Project Legions. Project Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call vote please, Steve.
Councilperson Demko?
Here.
Councilperson Boyd?
Here.
Councilperson Navarro?
Here.
Councilperson Sarsfield?
Here.
Councilperson Delas? Council President Katina?
Here.
And Mr. Smith?
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on any of the listed motions this evening? If there is, please step forward, state your name, and finally, keep your comments to three minutes or less. Seeing no more motion to step forward, we'll begin with administration. Councilman Sarsfield?
Thank you, Mr. President. My first motion, motion A, is a motion to approve amendments from the council meeting August 10th and September 8th of 2015.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Motion B is a motion to accept 2016 minimum municipal obligation report for the Borough of Carnegie Police Pension Fund as submitted by the Borough Manager.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Motion C is a motion to advertise the budget meetings as September 28th, October 19th, October 26th, November 16th, November 30th, and December 28th if needed.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion with those dates? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Motion D is a motion to extend an offer of employment to Dallas Cogar as a Navy probationary police officer contingent upon completion of a physical and psychological test.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Councilman Delas is obviously out tonight due to the holiday, so Councilman Boyd would you please read the motions for finance?
Certainly. Two A is a motion to approve September bill list as amended and the bill list addendum.
Second.
And the bill list addendum as amended, I'm sorry. So the second's for the bill list addendum as well, so, okay. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote please, Steve.
Councilperson Navarro?
Aye.
Councilperson Boyd?
Yes.
Councilperson Demko?
Yes.
Councilperson Sarsfield?
Yes.
Council President Katina?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Public Works, Councilwoman Demko?
A motion to approve payment application number one to Youngblood in the amount of $147,683.71 for work completed between July 1st and August 16th, 2015 for the 2015 pavement maintenance program, contract number 2015-03.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote please, Steve.
Councilperson Sarsfield?
Yes.
Councilperson Navarro?
Yes.
Councilperson Demko?
Yes.
Councilperson Boyd?
Yes.
Council President Katina?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve payment application number one to Lee Care's Construction, Inc., in the amount of $130,515.75 for work completed between July 1st and August 31st, 2015 for work completed on the Charles Street and Knox Avenue bypass culvert.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion on this item? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote please, Steve.
Councilperson Boyd?
Yes.
Councilperson Demko? Councilperson Demko?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Councilperson Sarsfield?
Yes.
Councilperson Navarro?
Yes.
Council President Katina?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve payment application number three to R&amp;B Contracting in the amount of $4,593.25 for work completed between June 19th and September 1st, 2015 on the Cooks Lane and Allen Street drainage stormwater improvements.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote please, Steve.
Councilperson Sarsfield?
Yes.
Councilperson Navarro?
Yes.
Councilperson Boyd?
Yes.
Councilperson Demko?
Yes.
Council President Katina?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve payment application number three to R&amp;B Contracting in the amount of $90,350.13 for work completed between July 30th and August 28th, 2015 on the lot number 10 and Citizens Parking Lot Reconstruction Project.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
No. Sure, everybody in the town is seeing, I think, that lots will great, the planting of the trees and the shrubbery and flowers and stuff will take place in October, and then there will be second planting in the spring, and once that in the growth starts, I think that people will see a dramatic improvement and it will be very eye pleasing.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Any other discussion? Seeing no other discussion, roll call vote please, Steve.
Councilperson Navarro?
Yes.
Councilperson Boyd?
Yes.
Councilperson Demko?
Yes.
Councilperson Sarsfield?
Yes.
Council President Katina?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve a contract time extension of two weeks to Lee Care's Construction on the Charles Street and Knox Avenue bypass culvert project.
Second. Anyone?
Second.
Motion has been made, I guess I put it, oh, actually, I forgot to start. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on this item?
I'm happy to elaborate. The contractor that's doing the work near the grade school is running behind schedule. We had a completion target date set to occur before school reopened. Obviously, since they're still working, schools reopen, they haven't, they haven't hit the date. There was a protracted delay of them deploying and starting the work of 40 days from the time we issued them the contract until they actually started doing the work. Recently, we received a request from them for a three-week extension whereby, under the terms of the contract, they would, they would have a penalty for not completing the contract on time. They were looking for that penalty to be waived by three weeks. The engineers came to us and told us that there were some, there were some water pipes and some drain pipes and different things that the OneCall service did not discover in advance, so there were, there were some challenges that the contractor faced that were unexpected challenges. But there's unexpected challenges every time you dig a hole in the ground. You don't really know what you're going to find, and these guys are experienced contractors. They, they do this kind of work. We expect them to be professional, that we expect them to enter into a contract with the intent of completing it in a timely fashion that, in the time that was allotted, they did not do that, so we feel that the penalty should apply, and it doesn't look like anybody's going to vote towards, for them to receive any extension on the contract.
Thank you. Personally, from my perspective, I believe if you're issued a contract and you're set a deadline in that contract, people need to be held accountable, obviously. And 40 days have passed, as Congressman Boyd has said, but there's been numerous issues with this project and the delays, and I understand certain things do come up, and I'm very understanding of those, but if the, if it had, if they would have proceeded when the contract had been issued, we wouldn't be here today where we currently stand, if that's not applied. So the motion has been made and seconded. I'll ask for a roll call vote on this, if anyone has different opinions, a roll call vote please, Steve.
Councilperson Sarsfield?
No.
Councilperson Navarro?
No.
Councilperson Boyd?
No.
Councilperson Demko?
No.
Council President Katina?
No.
Motion does not pass.
Thank you.
Motion to award contract number 2015-06A to Soul Eye Construction, Inc., in the amount of $93,087.50 for sewer excavation repairs.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote please, Steve.
Councilperson Demko?
Yes.
Councilperson Boyd?
Yes.
Councilperson Navarro?
Yes.
Councilperson Sarsfield?
Yes.
Council President Katina?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to award contract number 2015-06B to Aqua Infrastructure Rehabilitation Company, LLC, in the amount of $157,911 for sewer lining repairs.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote please, Steve.
Councilperson Boyd?
Yes.
Councilperson Sarsfield?
Yes.
Councilperson Navarro?
Yes.
Councilperson Demko?
Yes.
Council President Katina?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Community development, I'm sorry, Public Safety, Councilman Boyd?
Thank you, Mr. President. Give a motion to adopt ordinance 2418, an ordinance of the Borough of Carnegie, County of Allegheny, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, amending Chapter 15, Section 204 of the Borough Code of Ordinances relating to motor vehicles and traffic.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion on this item?
Just to let everybody know what it is, it basically sets up that there'll be no parking on the left-hand side of the street on Justice Avenue between Bell and Grant.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Community Development Code Enforcement, Councilman Navarro?
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to advertise ordinance number 2417, an ordinance for the Borough of Carnegie, County of Allegheny, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, amending Chapter 27 of the Borough Code of Ordinances, establishing certain general and specific standards relating to the location placed on the construction and maintenance of tower-based wireless communication facilities.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion on this item?
Just to clarify this, what we're basically doing is changing the ordinance in order to catch up with what is anticipated to be the changes in the technology, where normally we'd think in terms of a tower in a community or around a community, it's going to be somewhat dispersed, and utilizing such things as telephone poles, so it's going to be a much more diversified idea in the future. Basically, we're making sure that our ordinances are catching up with many of the ordinances that have already been placed in other communities.
Thank you. Motion has been seconded. Is there, I'm sorry, is there a motion to amend and seconded? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Motion to accept a proposal of Environmental Planning and Design, LLC, EDP, EPD, for me, to assist in the finalization of the Carnegie Borough zoning ordinances and as amended not to exceed $9,400.
Second. Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Since Councilman, I'm sorry, I want you to respond, I want you to respond here.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
This, whoa. This is a, an ordinance that we're going to engage a planner to codify our zoning ordinance, and we have been working with Town Center, which is a downtown consultant and downtown planning consultant, and they have helped us design an ordinance that helps us protect the integrity of our central downtown area, and so that we can keep the walkable main street intact, and the ordinances that will help develop the areas around the downtown area. So right now, it's just going to go to the planner. The public will definitely have a chance to discuss any of the parts of the ordinance, but we believe this will be the, the opportunity to make sure that our downtown continues to grow the way we want it to grow, and that people don't take advantage of our growth right now and try to come in and put maybe a big box retail store right in the center of town. So, basically it.
Thank you. And I would just like to thank Councilman Delas and Officer America for working through this. I think this, I believe, well, I shouldn't say think, I believe this ordinance is, will be very effective for the town in getting us where we need to go at the end of the day. So, yeah, thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, motion carries.
Motion to approve the curb cut application submitted by John and Barbara Zill for a property located at 318 Henry Lane, block and block, block 66K220.
Second. Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
And the fourth motion?
Was actually struck from the agenda for this evening. We're going to, there's several openings that are available, so we're going to be advertising all of those opening, openings at once for all of those obviously different positions there. Committee reports. We'll begin with administration. Councilperson Sarsfield?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank the mayor, the chief of police yourself, for, for the weather and what it was. I thought we had a successful Public Safety Day.
It sounded like you thanked the mayor and the chief for the weather.
Yeah. Well, I guess maybe if you had something to do with it, because the rain held off just long enough.
I know. We were fortunate, it really, really was.
But we, we had approximately about 35 kids show up. Want to thank Councilman Boyd and the fire department. You know, they had a guy there in full gear. Fortunately, it wasn't any hotter than it was, but, you know, they had a good shot. Our police department, the sheriffs came out, so I thought that it was a very nice day. And the date for the planting, as I mentioned earlier, is October 17th. We'll make sure that we get that out on our website and get some flyers out there. Whoever can participate, it'll be great, you know, again, continues our community growth, and that's all I have at this time, Mr. President.
Thank you. Code Enforcement, Community Development, Councilperson Navarro?
Nothing at this time.
Public Works, Councilperson Demko?
Nothing to report on this end, if there's anything you need to know.
Nothing. Public Safety, Councilperson Boyd?
Two things from the, from the fire department to everybody this evening. Believe it or not, winter's coming. I don't know if you have a date in your calendars where you traditionally change the battery in your smoke detectors, but January 1st seems to be a very popular date. Some people use November 1st because it starts to get cold, and it seems to be a stressor on batteries, but if you don't have a, a date in your calendar to remind yourself to change the batteries and the smoke alarm, it'd be a good idea to do it. And second reminder this year would be that lint in dryers can catch on fire, and if you don't clean the pipe that leaves the building on occasion, there can be a fire. I've only been a firefighter for four years, and I only recall, I think there was three dryer fires, but maybe there was only two. They, they don't happen all that often. Newer dryers are much more sensitive and have a lot more electronics, and they'll just shut the dryer down if it gets too hot, but traditionally, dryers are in basements, and one catches on fire and can easily get to the rafters. It could, it could extend the fire and, and get out of control relatively quickly. We had a small dryer fire over the weekend that the smoke alarm worked, alerted the people, they got out of the house, and it was out in minutes. It was, it turned out not to be a, a big deal, which is, is a good thing. Ironically, when we were cleaning up our gear at the firehouse, we've got the radios on, and we could see what's going on in other communities, Scott Township had a dryer fire at the same time. So I don't know if it's something about winter and dryers, or, or if it's a complete coincidence, but you need to check that pipe that lets the, that lets the lint get out of the house, and make sure it's not blocked so that you don't risk having a dryer fire. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Boyd. I have two things this evening. The first is that, in case you haven't been paying attention, obviously, everything that Alcasan has been doing and the consent decree that we've been federally mandated under, each year, and Alcasan put this out there, obviously, for a few more years, but the first year back in 2014, there was a 17% increase in your sewage charges. Each year after, it's about 11%. So to put that into some perspective, the average family of four basically pays about $80 per month in sewage bill for your sewage. If you project that out over, and what the increases are, or supposed to be, through 2020, with 11%, 11%, 11%, you're looking at basically an average sewage bill in 2020 of $2,000, $2,100 basically, that's going to be your average annual sewer bill. Now, if the borough has to do anything, obviously, and we will, we will obviously have to raise our rate structure, so if we increase our rate structure in 2020, your potential, and if the borough only increases at 2% per annum per year, which is half of what, basically not anywhere near what Alcasan is doing, the average bill in 2020 again would be $2,300. So, at the end of this, the consent decree should be in effect, be basically done by 2026, and this is a number that puzzles me and upsets me, but in 2026, if you project on where we potentially are going, your average annual sewer bill could potentially be $4,000 or $5,000 if the borough does any increases.
$400 a month?
No, that's, no, it would be roughly $400, at the high end, it would potentially be $400 a month, yes. And that's just something I want to put out there at this point in time, because the next effect, obviously, the next increase doesn't go into effect until January. So, Alcasan will be sending out the reminder, basically asking us to concur with this increase, which unfortunately, we really don't have a choice with, but we have to pass it on, obviously, to the residents, and Jordan, who in turn does our collections for us, will be asking us if we concur with this, and of course, we have to. But come January, you need inquiry, you need to potentially, you need to be prepared to pay, on, like I said, on average, it's going up to about between $114 and $127 per month versus $103, what it is right now, so. That's something I just, like I said, wanted to put out there, so everyone can be prepared for that. So that's going to hit some people harder than others, obviously, especially people that aren't a fixed income. So we need to start talking about educated people now on that. The other thing I'd like to say is, I'd like to thank everyone that made Carnegie shine. The woman who lives on Pittsburgh today a few weeks ago. Over the past few weeks, I take many walks around the town, looking and thinking about a few different things. And not that long ago, this month actually, the same street that I walked down looked like a war zone with dust, dirt, debris, and the water was still receding. People's entire lives were basically in the middle of the street. So I guess one thing goes through my mind, and it's the question I ask myself every day, how did we get here? Why is it now that Carnegie is the place to be? How is it everything now I look at as Carnegie, whether it be TV, newspapers, magazines, everything's Carnegie? It's a great thing, don't get me wrong, but you have to ask yourself why, and I do. And I'm still trying to figure it out, trying to figure out a lot of it. But one thing I think does come to mind is, it seems like some of the initiative was when we joined Allegheny together, a progress sponsored by Allegheny County, and there was lobbying that went into that initiative, and so tonight, I guess, we owe them a bit of thanks. Allegheny County, our county councilman Mike Federby, Allegheny County Executive Rich Fitzgerald, former director of the CCDC, Lee White, they all made that possible years ago. But obviously, in any community, the thanks just doesn't end with them, and where we're at today, it doesn't end with them. It's the CCDC, it's the Planning Commission, it's the zoning, it's the Shadr, it's Petron Park, it's all of them that deserve thanks for where we're at today. It's the Carnegie Arts Initiative, it's the Third Street Gallery, it's the Carnegie Stage, of course, it's the Carnegie Carnegie. It's new business owners like Mel Luke of The Flying Squirrel, Randy Tocci of Bacon, and again, it's the old business owners like Hush Cantley or Cantley's Nightlife, and Michael Troyani of Papa J's have hung in there throughout the years. It's the borough's current employees and past employees, but of course, most importantly, it's you, it's the residents that made our town great. So as I walked, I realized today we are truly brat blessed, because Carnegie is going through a renaissance, which each day being a little better than the day before. Moving forward, we will have trials and tribulations, and of course, growing pains. There will be discussions, debates, and even disagreements. But at the end of the day, Carnegie will be vibrant and more stronger than ever. And again, I want to thank everyone in this room, everyone who's not in this room, and everyone who's on this dais before, before me tonight, because it's about everyone. You've all made Carnegie great. Thank you. We'll now have the managers report.
Have them report this evening.
Thank you. Carnegie Volunteer Fire Department, EMS?
Thank you, Mr. President. Months of August, fire department responded 32 calls, EMS responded the 274 calls. During the months, there was three false alarms for the fire department, two of which were at Carnegie Towers. That brings the total so far this year to eight false alarms at Carnegie Towers. I point that out only because it's actually good news. The year I joined council, I did an analysis for council of the false alarms that were occurring at Carnegie Towers, and during a 10-month period, we had 62 false alarms. That's just an awful lot of... And that's just an awful lot of time wasted and risk taken. So having the false alarm ordinance in place, I believe, contributed to the significant reduction. And hopefully, we can continue to have the the false alarms from Carnegie Towers reduced at the same pace that's been happening over the last couple of years. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mayor's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. For September, I mean for the August numbers were criminal arrests were 14, parking tickets 234, traffic citations 24, complaints of self-initiated activity for 915 by our department. I just wanted to give you guys a quick update on where we're at with the Pendon traffic debacle. So at this time, we had another full closure that was rained out over the weekend. So that's two of the last three weekends that they were unable to complete the outbound paving. So what that means is that somewhere down the road, which is probably next weekend, they will have to do that, finish that outbound paving in the Carnegie area. Once they finish that outbound paving, which really should only take one day, but they may try to, they may have to stretch it out to two days. Once they finish that, then the Carnegie portion is primarily complete. But that still doesn't mean there won't be other full closures. They're still planning two other full closures for paving, which will happen and have to happen somewhere between now and before November. Those full closures will be the same way they are right now. They will shut down the parkway from, at this time, it'll be like from Green Tree through the tunnels. So that's where they're at right now. And then once they complete all of that, most likely, they will have to have an additional full closure just to repair the bridge joints. How long that'll be, I don't know. It might not even happen this year, it might happen next year. But to pave in between the joints of the bridges, they said. So that's where we're at as far as traffic goes. So I would expect some serious disruption between now and the end of the, until December with the closures. I would like to, we had a nice tip on social media a little while back. We've been looking for this one individual in our community for a crime that he committed. We got a nice tip on Facebook. We were able to arrest this individual, which we were looking for him for months. So social media does help and we appreciate anybody that leaves us a tip via our social media. So thank you. The other thing is graffiti, we're still having some trouble with graffiti. Our officers have twice busted individuals in the community with the graffiti, but we've had a couple additional taggings recently. And I really believe that, we talked about this before, we still, we need to be enforcing our ordinances on graffiti. And I know, Councilman Boyd, we've talked about this before. You know, there's, part of the ordinance is that, you know, we need to collect money and provide a reward for people. And you're actually in charge of dispersing the award, the award being the head of public safety. So we need to move full ahead with that. I know you're into graffiti as much as I do. So I just want to make sure that we are tackling this graffiti problem with all that we have. Want to thank the chief, he did it. With the construction up around the school, we've had no incidents of school safety with the children, primarily because the chief has addressed any of the issues. There were a few issues that could have been safety issues. The chief intervened immediately, made them stop working and actually put the contractors on notice that they are not to be in certain areas at certain times up at the school. So thank you very much, Chief, for that. Also, we will be doing a career lunch at the school coming up in October. The career will be law enforcement. So that'll be fun. It'll be sixth graders for their annual career. We have monthly career lunches and it'll be a nice change of pace for us. Last month, we had a few complaints. We had complaints about Lexington Court and Summit when it comes to traffic issues, which I can tell you right now, we have traffic issues all over the town. And we tried to do some targeted enforcement in both of those areas. Don't know exactly how effective it was, but we spent a good bit of time in both those areas trying to handle their traffic issues, including adding a stop sign to one of the areas and meeting with the businesses up on Summit to try to talk to their employees and make sure they drive through our town at a much better rate. So we're doing the best we can. That's one of the hardest things, is controlling traffic. We have some limited resources because we're the only state, I mean, yeah, we're the only state in the entire United States. It's not allowed to use radar. So that right off the bat puts us behind the eight ball with other states. And so we have, everything we use for speed enforcement has to be VASCAR oriented. And that's, it's not as easy as radar. Talk a little bit about the Boys and Girls Club. The Boys and Girls Club, they had a great summer this year. They averaged 106 kids in their summer camp throughout the summer. They also provided $10,000 in scholarships so the kids could attend the camp spring, needy kids could attend the camp spring. And they also provided over $10,000 in teen employment. So I appreciate what they're doing there. And their after-school program right now, they average 98 kids right now in their after-school program. On a day, it's a daily average. So they're really doing well. As far as the school goes, we were very fortunate, partnered with Allagany Cleanways. And we have a grant for the Carnegie, we got a grant for Carnegie Elementary. And they're going to get watershed education. The people from Allagany Cleanways will come in and give them a one-hour class for every kid from third through sixth grade about watershed education. And they will take all the sixth graders on a trip to the mouth of where the Shore Tears Creek meets the Ohio River and have a classroom on a boat for them. So I'm excited about that. That's, this is one of the first communities to get that grant, so it's a really nice opportunity for us. We do have another Veterans Flag Ceremony next month. Councilman Zarsville, his father, will be honored, Joseph Pronko. That'll be next month.
Do you have the date?
We're still waiting for the, we're waiting to confirm the date because they have a flag retirement ceremony too. We're trying to coincide, we're, you know, cooperate and make sure we don't mess up their flag retirement ceremony. It's usually the second Saturday though. And then a lot of events coming up. One of the things is I check out the library. The library has a number of events coming up, including a free Flight 93, I mean, a Flight 93 informational story that I guess is about a book this gentleman wrote called Flight 93: The Story of the Aftermath and Legacy of American Courage on 9/11. And the author's going to be speaking on September 16th and that's bringing to the public. I think that's going to be very interesting. And they also have their big fundraiser coming up on October 2nd. And that's their most important fundraiser of the year. And with the traffic issues, I think it's more important than ever that people from Carnegie step up to the plate and try to help them out this year. And that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. We'll now go into general public comment. Again, if you have any comments, please state your name and address. And please keep your comments to three minutes or less, please. Come on.
My name's Kelly Kirkwood. I live at Seven Avenue. I dropped off some packets on the US Capitol.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Did you have any questions or is there anything?
There's three properties on demolition list at this point in time. We're going to submit them all and then, obviously, we're not going to get funding for all three of them.
I understand.
At that point in time, when the decision comes back, I mean, we'll review the decision.
When do you expect to do that? When are the bids due back?
Do you know that dates, I don't know off the top of my head. Yeah, I was going to say, they're not, yeah, it's going to be a little while before they.
The bidding isn't done by us. It's agreed through the county to demolish these properties. One of the three properties on the application, the application came back, we were awarded a set amount of money. So what they're going to do, and it's Shore West Court, which occupies the same bank, same building, but it's not the borough itself. It's a council, a congress of several local council governments. It's going to put these out for bid with along with other ones that they have from other communities and try to get better prices by, based on volume. They may get some, they may not. But they control the bidding process very good because they're granting us the money. The procedure, it could, how long it takes really up to them. But they'll get it done as expeditiously as they possibly can.
Is there a deadline set?
They haven't even put a bid package together yet.
It could be a couple of months is basically the status.
Two to three months. And the unfortunate aspect of it is that moving forward, we've always received this money via the county, through the council of governments, to do demolitions. But the unfortunate aspect is that that money probably, this will probably, you know, I don't know if you concur Pat, this will probably be the last time we receive that package of money for demolitions.
The URA controls, the way that we get this community development block ground money is through the federal government, actually, is the way it flows. And the federal government has basically come out and said that we don't want you doing demolitions with this money. Even though, even though we all know that there's no real money to do demolitions unless you budget for it. And many communities struggle with trying to knock down lighted property or trying to deal with property that has potential issues. So this is what Councilman Zarsville's saying. This will probably be the last, one of the last few times that we'll potentially be getting any money through this process. Now, we saw everything that you presented, all of council saw, and the mayor obviously saw what you presented to us. And we're going to evaluate it once it all comes back. But to give you some background, it looks like there might be someone interested in one of the other properties. There's two real properties that are real high on the priority list. Obviously, Seventh is one of the, 645 Ridge is obviously the other one. Those are real high on the priority list. So 645 Ridge is, there potentially might be someone interested in trying to rehab that. We're not sure yet at this point in time. We're going to reach out to them, see if they're interested. We're going to have our engineer do a little due diligence with their property, actually, to see if it can be rehabbed. Because if it can, and if there's someone interested, that might make the decision a whole lot easier at that point in time because Seventh knows the property that would likely be demolished. On the other hand, we might be, they might go out to bid and they might come back for some absurdly low amount. We might be able to do everything we want more. But it all depends upon the end of the day as to what exactly it comes, when it goes out, when it comes back. And then I guess we'll cross that bridge when we get there. To make a long story short.
If you have a contractor, that's winter, he doesn't want to let his employees off and you might want to come in and do them cheaper.
But we very much understand your concerns and your neighbors' concerns, as outlined in the document.
Yeah, I thought you did a great job with that.
Thank you. Thank you. It's been a long time talking, to be honest. I'm ready for it to come down.
I would agree with you.
Just a quick question while we have you here since we have people. It's really not my jurisdiction, but I'm going to ask anyone who's present in the line is. Is there anything that can be done at the property right now to make it easier to live by? And is there anything that needs to be done?
We keep it as clean as we can.
Trust me, I know I have a major property right next to me. I have to clean the leaves on the lot. A lot of times I just go over and cut the grass because it's right next to me. I've got a family of skunks living next door to me.
Yeah. We just, we try to keep it as clean as we can. I mean, other than that, you know, you kind of cross the boundary of.
Nothing you need from the borough. You don't need the police to go up there and check to see if it's secure or anything.
It might be a good idea because I do know that the door handle was busted off of it. Somebody tried to, somebody got into it.
Somebody got into it again?
I think it's closed currently now, but, you know, like we keep tabs on it, but.
So if we could get back up and board that.
Well, 332, 332, so, right. Chief, if you have somebody to check on that tomorrow, please, thank you. If there's anything else.
It's a side door.
Man, they had to go up and get a crew and board that up.
I don't know what you can do about the overgrowth, but I mean, it's winter's coming and the leaves will be falling off, so. Yeah, as you can see in the picture, it's pretty well overgrown. You can barely see it from the roof. And even some of the people that signed the petition forgot it was there. I didn't forget it was there, but they forgot it was there, because it's so overgrown.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
I'm in East Anne Ingram. I live on Marrow Avenue. Major concern for me is my street. They dig the dirt up, like there's like two inches deep with no mud anymore. And somebody could step in it and get hurt. And at night, it's really dark. And every time it rains, our street is completely mugged. When are they going to finish this?
We actually discussed it, Councilman Boyd. Would you like to take lead on that since you were the?
The, it's recognized that that's an issue.
It's horrible.
Yeah. The way the contract was, when we had the road repaved, contract called for the space between the asphalt curb and the sidewalk to be filled in with dirt. We went from a drought season to the monsoon that occurred last weekend. Most of that dirt got washed out, so that was a failure this past week. Steve, myself, a couple of the engineers, met with our engineers to talk about what we're going to do. And they're going to take all the dirt out in the places where there's a problem and replace it, put asphalt in its place.
How long is this going to take? Because they got right to like a quarter of an inch of my driveway and stopped. That was Friday morning.
With asphalt or cleaning it up?
Just cleaning it out.
Yeah.
So they still have from like 5:10 all the way down to the end of the street to finish on the left side. Are they doing the right side too or just the left side?
Only where it's really narrow and where there's a risk that the rain is going to wash the dirt out. We think that the grass is going to grow.
I don't know. It's pretty murky because when I walk the dog, it's still pretty.
Soft.
Soft, very soft.
If it gets washed out, we're going to replace it with asphalt. That's the plan.
It's really a mess. The way they cut my driveway out, they screwed my concrete up. They didn't put the asphalt up to my concrete. So I have a gap this big that I have to back up over. What's that going to be like this winter?
Maybe we could.
That's something specific. What's your address?
509, 509 Marrow, it's 509, my neighbor, two doors up, which was the Antorshes House, I think, 507. There's like three driveways on the left side that are all exposed like that with a gap. Because once winter comes, if that water gets up underneath, it's going to be.
You said they damaged, like they damaged your driveway.
I have pictures. So you are going to work, so it'll be finished before winter?
Yes.
Do you have the pictures on the email?
Yes.
I think you should, yeah, I'd like to see them.
Well, let's see, let's see if you're picking it. I have a picture too, but we'll see if it's your driveway.
Here's, this is my driveway. Okay, here's where they're taking the dirt out. That's my neighbor next door. This is my driveway here. Yeah. So when they cut it out.
I don't have this picture.
When they cut it out, like there was concrete there, but it's on. So when my husband went out and talked to the guys from Yon City, he goes, well, why didn't you tell us the day we were painted? Well, he works, I was at work, so nobody's had to tell them. But that's not our job to tell them. So my driveway along with like my neighbor, two doors up, any driveway that's exposed on that left side, all has a gap like that.
Why would they even do that though? Why would they even, I've never seen it on any of our streets.
Why would they even, I've never seen a lay of a street that had concrete.
If you, if you walked that street and then saw.
And now our sidewalks are so distorted.
Some of the driveways stick out 18, 24 inches into the street beyond the sidewalk. Some of the driveways are short, some sidewalks are 40 inches wide, some are 48 inches wide. It's a zigzag, zigzag.
Okay, so.
It's a, it's a.
We'll be in context, let's trust you then, we'll get that corrected for you.
Do you want my number?
Yeah, I don't want to give that right.
Point, 1, 2, 973, 3212. I am GH.
Okay.
Thanks.
You're welcome, thank you. We had a discussion about Morrow last week, so we know there's obviously issues. But some of the, some of those issues are ridiculous, I mean, especially when they damage your property. Anyone else this evening?
Hi, I'm Angel Ward, it's another, and I'm going to thank you for staying there to the contractors on Charles. I live on Knox, and I've seen many, many idle days, so I appreciate you not extending the time of them. In the same sense, I live on Knox, and I have been inundated with animals. I caught five skunks, three raccoons this year. My neighbor on the other side, on Roland, has caught four skunks, $60 a skunk. I don't have $300 to catch skunks. Last year, I caught five raccoons and three groundhogs. Because of the neighbor on the other side of me, 325 continues to leave out food and water and open containers throughout the yard. Front porch, scum, my neighbor's sitting, raccoons, groundhogs. There's an ordinance against food left outside. I've drawn Allegheny County Health Department two years ago. That's okay, Mrs. Schwartz, it's not misunderstood. That doesn't fix it. The game commission told me that next year, it has increased, it will double every year until, until something is changed.
Our, our code enforcement, our code enforcement should be able to come up there and do something.
They're already involved.
I understand, I just need to.
Yeah, I can't, yeah, I can't discuss the.
I understand, I just need to.
Yeah, we are.
Thank you so much.
But I will discuss this with you, and I've been discussing this with there, is because we have, some people have gotten their skunks paid for, and some people haven't.
I understand that, I'm aware of that also.
Right, and that's, you know, and, and I'm telling people that they're not to have their skunks paid for. He's working on a policy, but we need to be across the border.
He, he made him pay.
He said he's working on a policy.
I'm working on a policy to try.
My son, because he wouldn't bring his kids to my house, bought, bought the container. It's my container, it's my trap. By my son who brought it. I watch my grandchildren. It's 90 degrees, you know, you can't go on the porch. We, I, I put fire at it, I said, I think the animals are on the porch. Oh yeah, it looks like raccoons, it looks like, you can't go outside the house, and it's, it's terrible.
Yes, skunks are a problem all over the borough. The problem is trying to figure out, I, I understand that we make the residents for, we make the residents pay for them. But I'm not of the opinion, I'm not sure what the solution is. But I'm not of the opinion that we penalize people for them trying to do, trying to tackle a problem that we know the borough has. I'm not sure what the solution is yet. But I don't believe in penalizing residents in that way. But I need to try to figure out a solution, whether we can get a different rate, or whether that's something the borough can take on. A lot of municipalities don't pay for skunk removal. Scott Township subsidizes some of it, some, one of it.
Maybe we can find a reason.
But the bottom line is, the bottom line is, so it has to be consistent policy across the board.
Yeah.
Whatever we decide.
So the problem is, I mean, it's a problem that we're going to be faced with, and it gets, it's like the deer, probably, in Mount Lebanon. So we need to figure out, excuse me? We're in a meeting, sorry. Thank you, sorry. But at this point in time, I mean, we hear everything that you're saying, so we need to come up with a solution.
Don't be afraid to take pictures either.
Oh, I haven't, I'm going to give the girl a picture right now.
Mr. President, with, with, this listener would suggest.
There's a time, there's a time points for everything.
That perhaps we can seek through the people that are feeding these animals, attracting these animals, restitution that would allow these people to be, you know, giving their money back with the skunks. And that's something, I guess we could talk to the magistrate about this.
Something I'd have to investigate, I just wasn't thought that I mentioned to Mr. Sarsfield. Okay.
But on the other hand, the, the skunk problem is much bigger than just one yard.
Yeah, it's, it's everywhere unfortunately. And it gets worse each and every year. Anyone else this evening? Seeing no one else, we'll begin with putting welfare, Councilman Sarsfield.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, September 11th is come and gone once again, 14 years ago. But I attended a Friday evening event over at South Park, which I was invited to. And it was very moving, the key speaker, actually was retired Air Force, who was in the Pentagon the day that the plane had hit. And this was the first event that he'd ever attended since that had happened. He retired from the Air Force about a month after the event, and he kind of, he's kept himself since. But he was very moved by attending this event. There was probably about 100 or so people there. It was just a magnificent event for such a solemn, solemn memory. But, you know, I, I think part of our healing process is, you know, kind of putting those things aside. But I think that, you know, we have to remember that there are brave men and women every day out there fighting terrorism, you know, and being successful in their, in their fights. And that, you know, whether it's our Carnegie Police, or Scott Police, or Pittsburgh Police, that if a tragic event like that would occur here, our brave men and women would do the same thing. That we can't never forget our first responders. And, you know, remembering the flood, you know, our chief at the time, you know, taught himself in the harm's way. So, you know, let, let us, you know, as we reflect on whether it be our flood, or 9/11, whatever it is, let's be thankful that we live in the greatest nation on the whole world, and that we have the brave men and women serving us that are willing to make whatever sacrifice to keep us safe. That's all I have from, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman LaRrow.
Nothing to say, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, or Councilman Delco.
I just wanted to let everybody know that we're starting work on the Honda Trail again. For the two middle weekends in October, but we're starting to build it now, so if anybody's interested in helping us, we can offer some help. That's it.
Thank you, Councilman Boyd.
Nothing to say, Mr. President.
Thank you. There's one thought that I'd like to leave everyone aware of. Because it really concerns me, it, it really bothers me. Normally, I try to stay silent on state and national matters. Because it's army municipality, it should, this body obviously should be dealing with municipal concerns. But I don't know how closely anyone's been following the state budget issue. Here we are in the second week of September without a budget. Deadline was obviously July 1st, so here we are, still no budget at this point in time. Now, to put this in perspective, you have Carnegie. We're required to pass our budget by December 31st, every year, a balanced budget, without exception. It's not an easy task, obviously, to balance a budget, I understand that. It becomes exponentially more difficult when obviously you get to the state, national level, what have you. However, we work together and listen to each other in trying to get the job done. Because we have responsibility to you. So I ask, in this rhetorical question, when does common sense really go out the window? When you reach the state or national level, why aren't the roles the same? Women getting paid for an action become acceptable practice? As a taxpayer, you would consider this entirely unacceptable if we sat up here, got paid, and did nothing. Each legislature takes about $85,000 a year. That's a lot of money. And yet, there's an action inherent, there's inaction in Harrisburg. Well, I'm sure that this is frustrating you as it is to me, but I'm just tired of it. We send officials to Harrisburg and Washington for us, the people. What they should be doing is sitting down, talking, discussing, debating, disagreeing. But most importantly, listening to each other. However, in this equation, there is something that is clearly lacking. And the thing that's clearly lacking is obviously finding common ground. Where is that middle space? When did compromise become a four-ledger word? Because it certainly seems to me like polarization gets worse each and every day. You turn on the news, you see, read the papers, you can't help but see it. And it's, as a father, as a parent, I mean, whether the money's going towards the schools, some, our legislature and our governor have to sit down and get this worked out. You have to sit down, you have to listen to each other, and you really have to work it out at the end of the day. And I say compromise, and when you think about it, compromise isn't that involved. You sit down and listen to other people and work to find that middle piece of ground. We listen to everyone, we listen to all of you, and we listen to each other. So I would just like to say that compromise is just a breath away. And I urge the governor and the slate legislature, before this impacts the school districts and programming, that we get this resolved. Thank you, everyone, for listening to me, so I, I appreciate that. And like I said, I try to stay out of that, but it's, it, it needs to be, I, I felt it, someone needed to say it because I can't be the only one thinking this on a daily basis. So again, thank you, everyone, thank you for the time this evening. Motion to adjourn. Motion has been made, second? Second. All those papers, take a clap, my saying aye? Aye. Motion carries, thank you, everyone.